Difficult to get this radius encroachment, so I can't bring the drive straight out and then do a radius encroachment with property in the north without them. But at the point that if that spurs something, this could be very easily relocated and then coordinated in it. And we went as far as to contemplate, you know, this becomes a landscape island with Mirard parking on the north side and now we're kind of a cohesive development. So we've given considerable thought to that on an IFCON.
And if I may add, you know, we actually went so far as to have an agreement negotiated with Tim Horton that specifically reserves the right for those easements that Mark described because they were very open to it. And it's laid out so that we could easily move the curb cut and only have one curb cut then between the two parcels instead of having two.
Mr. Senzey, could anything else?
Well, no, I agree with John and the other comments. I guess my question is, have you ever limited the hours of the drive-through? You know, not necessarily in terror business, but just limit the hours of the drive-through.
We have. It's dependent, again, kind of what the community wants and what our operation guys are comfortable with. I can give you an example in Birmingham or in Bloomfield at Woodward and Square Lake. We actually closed the dining room early and leave the drive-through open later because the community didn't want the people that would go inside to be honking, blocking their cars at midnight. So they asked us to... It caught me by surprise, I even had to get clarification, "No, no, you mean close the drive-through and leave the dining room open." No, no, no. So we have done that, we've looked at that. Oftentimes, the dining rooms in those situations that I spoke of earlier where they're... where they show that their business isn't what it should be in the middle of the night, we'll leave the drive-through open and close the dining room from a cost-saving measure, staffing and everything else, and also safety. We always require it to be on staff, but regardless of that, you don't have the inside traffic that could potentially cause a problem with lower staff.
Mr. Kret, do you have anything further?
Well, I just to reiterate, I think their solution's very creative. My only technical question would be, is there a way to keep it a neighborhood node district and allow a drive-through? Is there any possible overlay or anything we can do to allow that, a condition?
No, at this point, no.
Unless they ask for a use variance, which is unlikely to be granted, I'm sorry. They could possibly ask for a use variance, I suppose, but...
Still doesn't give you the drive-through though.
But the standard is so high for a use variance...
The standard for a use variance is so high that it should be denied.
I would like to see it developed this way, but I'm trying to make it work with our ordinance, our master plan and...
At this point, this would be the most... the way to go.
Did you make it into a CB?
Yes.
And then you have that isolated neighborhood node designation to the north.
That's a question for the Planning Commission, City Council.
Yeah, you're right. We were simply seeking to change site type. We really, we don't want, I just wanted to be clear, we're not seeking the rezoning per se. All I need was a site type, but unfortunately, there's no mechanism that lets me do that unless I do it officially through this route. So we're certainly open to any other method that accomplishes a site type change without the rezoning process.
Well, absolutely, the development of this property affects the other, so...
Sure.
Mr. Evans?
Where is the main entrance to the Cafe and Bake Shop?
Main door would be right here.
Right there.
Yep. So it lends itself to that patio and kind of the outdoor dining area, so it... It lays out quite nicely. It's come a long way from where we started.
Is there an entrance on the north end?
A service entrance. With all the service entrance, not a public entrance. Back door, employees, trash, things like that.
A long walk from the park.
Yes, yes.
And you're gonna have people, you're gonna have people walking through your drive-through lane to get to the front door.
In this area?
No.
On the back?
If you have people up in those...
Coming across.
You're gonna have people cutting across because your front door is in the north or the southwest corner of the building.
We've tried to lay that out and a couple of things that actually we've done recently is integrate the speaker into the menu board, so there's not a separate speaker with the menu tilted on a 45. The menu board's now parallel to the drive-through lane. So what we can actually do, we've widened the sidewalk out to seven feet to allow for a 12 to 15-inch menu board with some space and then the ability for potential overhang to still allow pedestrians to get through there at any given point. Obviously, the handicap being located here for the, again, smooth transition into that, what we would hope would be a positive type area.
Well, I think you have a plan that's viable with some changes. I'd like to see some changes in the hours of operation too, and I just need to be convinced that the residential neighborhood will now be similarly impacted by this. So I think you have somewhat of a consensus.
Agreed. Appreciate your time.
With the group, so is there anything, do you have any other?
Yeah, I was just gonna comment that that's what we wanted to do was to try to get walkability from the street itself. And I know that you can actually put vegetation to eliminate that walk through, going through the drive-up. You can actually, with landscaping or whatever.
Yeah.
But I think that's a, I think that's a good solution. It's a tight solution, tight site, it's a proud site, and I'm very excited over it.
Something, too, if I could, just for a little clarification, or maybe not, just for, we had talked about having this patio, as I think Mr. Tegel indicated. We actually had the building and everything pushed to the east 10 more feet. That brought this patio up to it. We originally assumed that that would be considered that 10-foot setback, but because it's kind of the patio area, it got thrown into it. We'd be open to increasing that. The only concern is, to Mr. Tegel's point, how that affects the parking calculations and what we would do there or how you would view that. But again, an outdoor dining room is open to attract more of a pedestrian customer as well.
I have a question, I guess, for staff. What if they were to actually pave the entire area up to the sidewalk? Is that okay to do?
Whoa.
If they were just to pave, you know, I'm talking about brick pavers or something like that.
I believe if it was a patio area, like a positive area, yes, they could.
Well, I'm saying, it's not, it could be a walkway.
Right. If it was a plaza, person, people area, it could, yes.
Well, it's not a variance requirement.
Something that would be considered to look at.
Okay. Mr. Senzey?
I mean, the obvious question to me is, why would you have the building entrance in the south side? It just, is it because of the orientation of the building?
Orientation of the building with the drive-through window. The other problem is, and we looked at this because, Mr. Kostav, you even asked me this question the first time, Mark, what are you crazy putting that? Part of that whole neighborhood node, we wanted to orient it to that intersection, right? So I mean, it's that walkability, it's that appearance and that feel from the intersection. So flipping it around, because we're a restaurant, you gotta have a back of house, so we have that storage area. We gotta do it somewhere, we can't split the building north and south if you're moving this way. So it just made more sense to us from a community perspective, it made more sense to keep that to the south and then create this, being able to landscape kind of the back of the building here and allow that service entrance. I think it's just a better feel for the whole neighborhood, no concept.
The bike racks are going there, right?
Put them wherever you would like.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Look forward to it. Appreciate you coming in. Thank you. Well, gentlemen, I'm gonna ask for a two-minute recess.
It ain't gonna happen in two minutes, but...
Three minutes.
Yeah, yeah.
This all is our location as a selling point. That's the point. So the point of this spot is, we're selling Troy as a location to do business.
Oh, it's a sell.
Now we don't have, all these computer glitches. What, hell, it looks good though, doesn't it?
Who's that handsome devil?
I can see the glare there from something.
Sorry.
You ready?
Yep.
Start with that.
That was great.
Success starts with the right location. Did you know that in Troy, millions of potential customers are within business of our business? We are home to Fortune 500 companies, award-winning schools, and a culturally diverse community. We streamline procedures and cut red tape. Hi, I'm Brad Savinat. Call me about your development plans because Troy is where business gets done. Call 248-524-3364 for business at troyamind.com.
So the idea is, is just to, you know, put simple messages out there, a theme, you know, where we had, we started off with two, Troy is where business gets done, and we had now Troy is open for business, we had filmed yet. But again, we're, it's a chance for us, I think, to be creative, to have some fun with this. Anybody's welcome to participate and I'll throw it out there for your comments.
Do you have something to add, Brad, to it?
Just that, I think if, generally speaking, if you're not telling your story as a business or as a department or as a board, if you're not telling your story, then other people are telling your story for you. So what we decided to do, I think what the city's trying to do more is engage the public and get our, kind of our message out, get information out, be more transparent. We're, the city right now is updating the website. I think the website, there's a lot of information there, it's incredible how much information's there, but it's hard to find. It's kind of disorganized and what we're doing is we're streamlining it, making it more modern, easier to use. Basically, if it takes you more than three clicks to find something, it's too many. It's hard to find.
I think user hospital might be a good...
Yeah, user hospital. So we recognize some of the things Mark touched on, you know, we, you know, we're trying to be more progressive, getting more information out there, marketing our properties, our residents, our programs, and just getting the word out there that Troy is a great place to live, work, and play. And this is just one small little piece of the puzzle that we have a volunteer who's really good at putting these together. That was a demo, but you know, what you'll see will be better produced, but...
The HD quality too. Mr. Teck?
I like your ideas, I think, especially to the younger population. I think through the organization, Tom and I belong to AIA, there are modules and teaching tools that we could probably bring in and employ, depending on what the goals and objectives are of those touchpoints to those younger kids. So I think that could be a lot of fun. And two, I think it does something that we've tried to do as a business community through the chamber, and we have not been successful, is engage the residential community and start to build a team of, you know, both, on both sides of the fence, of bringing the government arm into this and working, that I think is very important, and I like your 30-second spot.
Well, thanks. Well, see, you know, you can use video to bring people together, you know, I think, because again, we can do all kinds of things, it's very easy and quick to do. Regarding residential neighbors, for example, I think one of the things we should pursue is getting a number of testimonials from business owners and residential people, why do they love living in Troy? And just putting those on those things and go on the website. We can maybe put those together into something interesting if we find that we, you know, it's good, but...
Funny you should mention that. We're actually trying to create a stockpile of testimonials, and we're going down that path. And secondly, we're putting together like a newsletter, an e-blast, that we're gonna send out to business owners, developers, architects, engineers, landscape architects, on a regular basis. And it needs to be useful and informative. We don't, you know, everyone gets those emails where you just get it and you click it and delete it. This needs to be useful and helpful, and we're putting together the database now, as we speak, of all these, I've got a stack of business cards like this, we're gonna put existing businesses and potential businesses and send this out. And again, it's all about getting the word out, telling our story, you know, it's another small piece of the puzzle.
That's right, and we have to take the positives because we have not heard enough of the positives, you know, why is Troy a good place? Well, if you're talking about promoting business, obviously, can you have a better location than Troy? This is about as good as it gets, and there are literally, as I said at the end, you know, millions of people are very close to you. So as a business person to have that access, well, that's priceless. And then there's a, there's a lot more, but we have to, we have to tell that story. And what we've heard the last two, three years has been a different story, how there's no money anymore, how we're just gonna go through a series of budget cuts, how everything we had we're going to lose. And we have to fight against that. And there's another story to tell. And I think the fact that way too much emphasis on part of our city leaders has been placed on budgetary concerns to the extent of excluding everything else, and you can't do that long-term. You, at some point, you have to get back to building your city again, talking about reinvesting in your city again. You don't get anywhere without investing. If you just go down the path of lopping things off your budget because you think you can't afford it every single year and go and decline, and continue to decline, you will not reinvest in anything, and you won't have anything as far as a vision for your future. And we certainly have the capability of doing both things. But to start out there, you have to, you have to put a different message out there. And or an additional message. There's the one message, another message, and other messages have to be put forth, and I think that's part of our responsibilities, I think so, to do so. Mr. Trump?
Yeah, I agree with your comments. One of the things that happened was when we had a public forum, if you remember, with respect to the zoning ordinance. Where did we have that?
Where was it?
Master plan?
Yeah.
Up at the Michigan State Extension.
Yeah, that's right. That was very successful, I thought. That kind of a setup where we can get the existing seniors or existing people a part of it, but more importantly, we have, you know, real potential problems, as you said before, especially 15 Mile. We're all like industrial. One of the things that I did was I had Lawrence Tech, and it was sponsored by the Chamber, and we got Lawrence Tech to actually do a study for us on Major Road. But it was, it was a big project, and they had seniors doing that. But if we're gonna take a block area of that area and we're gonna give the project to LIT or Lawrence or U of D, you know, and actually see if we can't get them to do that as a project, to give some ideas as to what, that is what the developers need, is they need a pretty picture. They don't have the foresight, at least this has been my experience, as much as the creativity of the youth, as you say, and as John said. These guys are young guys, young people, they're really aggressive, and they just have some way out ideas, and that's what we really need. And we need something to spear that up because we really got a real problem area, especially where the old Keymart site used to be. I'm talking about the Stroud, Lethernoy's there. I mean, that's an ideal spot where this, I've advocated this for a long time, City Hall. If we were at the prime to sell this site, we could have everything down there and on that site, brand new, new City Hall and everything, brand new, because this is a prime location. And we don't need a prime location for a City Hall. I mean, off I-75, but I'm getting off into a different area. The other thing I wanted to mention is that I think that we really need to get the city departments on board as to what our dream is. We need to get engineering, I mean, you know, the site lighting that I was talking about, you know, my big peeve is, you know, Rochester Road with the highway lights instead of having the coat lights that we were talking about. And I don't care if it's county governed or not, Birmingham does not let the county dictate, they dictate, or other municipalities. The other thing was, I really think we need council to be a part of what our dream is, but we should really start spelling out, what do we want to be five years from now? And I think that should be really a part of, you know, everything has to be from the top, they have to get buy-in on that. And the other thing I was gonna say is that I attended a conference, and boy, I'll tell you, it was really an education to see how private-public sector works, and how it works very well, like they did in Grand Rapids is an excellent example. And I think we also saw it in Galmazoo, private, you know, development, but I guess our council right now is not really, they're afraid of private involvement with us, with public. But anyhow, those are the key things that I think that we could really stress and see if we can get, because no one around here, I think, is doing anything private-public. Give you an example, one of the seminars that I attended, and I really thought it was really great, I can't remember where it was located, but they did a private-public sector, they had a city hall, they had a university in the same building, and they also had suites in the same building complex. You talk about mixed use, you talk about PUD, they had all that together. And then what they did was some of the spaces they had night classes in where they were not used at during the day, and it was really, and they had a school combined, a high school. But those are kind of dreams that really could really work real well, but I think that somehow we have to think out of the box and be thinking beyond.
Right, well, that's what we should, we should be doing, an incubator of ideas. Mr. Hudson, do you have something on that?
Well, just in a different area. It's been a long time since I was in high school, we had a homeroom, but in those days, you'd have in your homeroom maybe a five minutes of announcements over the public address system. Presumably, our schools today have flat screens, and if they do that sort of thing each day. If we've got a series of 30-second work-live-in-Troy spots like that, why not play them in the schools at the start of the day? These kids are gonna talk to their folks, presumably if they eat dinner with them at night, and maybe inspire some people and get the word out.
Mr. Senzey?
I agree with Tom, where it's our vision. I think the city council needs to be involved with us, and we should have like a vision session or some type of ability to describe, you know, I know we've been harping on environmental stewardship and stormwater management, wetlands and some things like that, and it seems like we're going toward a deaf ear. And I think it would be helpful if we can get the city council and the city management more in tune with what we're looking at.
Well, I think we should identify some goals, you mentioned some good areas too, and get some things together, put a little presentation together, and provide that to them. I think it's up to us to, as a planning commission, and we're looking forward to revising our master plan next year, this is really a prelude to that. And I think if we get some solid ideas together, put together a few, two, three, four-minute presentations, and once we have, you know, identifiable goals that we all are behind, then we contact the council and ask for the time to present that to them. Because this is gonna be, it wouldn't end up being most likely part of our master plan revision as well, so...
Mr. Schultz?
I know it, I'm, it's just blasphemy to repeat this, and people are going to be hissing on television, but I totally support the comment that this is the wrong location. It was the wrong location for City Hall when it was built in 1958 or whenever it was built. And if we're talking about increasing our tax revenue, we are sitting on one of the most valuable, if not the most valuable corner in Oakland County.
No question.
And we have a functionally obsolete... And we have a functionally obsolete building. In the meantime, until that might come to fruition, I would certainly think that Troy could do what the city of Huntington Woods has done, and that is move their post office into the City Hall. Because the postal service is trying to sell a building over on Liberoi Road. And there's plenty of room for what they do in that building now because except for the retail desk, there's virtually, in the, the post office boxes, there's virtually nothing in that building any longer. So, they can sell stamps and take in parcels in this building as easily as they can in that one over there.
Sure. Well, I think, you know, there's no question, I think, the property at Coolidge and Big Beaver and this complex here, two proud jewels as far as land. And I think that that could be, to me, I always thought, well, that's going to be the land bank for the next generation and the generation after that, most likely. Because when the time is right, this land is just so incredibly valuable and you can trade off. You could use this land here for major development and with the money you make off of it, you could, you could provide all kinds of city services, park land, and all kinds of other things. And that's, that is a goal, I think, down the road. Not, obviously.
Moral.
Yeah, not realistic today, but I really think the next generation. But it's good, it's good to put that on the table because people need to be aware of that and think about that and go, oh, yeah, what about that? Because that's the kind of thinking that has to be brought forward. That's the kind of things that aren't being talked about. And you have to, and that's our job as planners. We look ahead 10, 20, 30 years and beyond. And there's nothing wrong, that's what we're supposed to do. And I like that. And I'd like to see more of it. But I think if we, if we could come up with some solid, I think, Mr. Stratt, excellent suggestion, talking about all that vacancies, all the vacancies on 15 Mile. That's an area, what can we put into certain areas of industrial and 15 Mile? And write down, you know, well, all the different kinds of things that could work in that type of setting. And then move on to some of these other ideas that were brought forth as well, so.
What is the image that we want city to be five years and 10 years from now? What do we want to be, what do we want to be known for? What are we trying to accomplish? And then how can we accomplish that goal?
Right.
But we have to identify that. I mean, like you said, you know, 10 years, 15 years, five years from now, maybe the economy is going to be back. And maybe we can, or could be sold, this whole thing, if it went with a joint venture with private-public. Maybe an exchange, you know, there's all kinds of.
Well, there is.
Especially there's universities around right now looking for space, I know that. If we were to actually be a part of.
It's just a matter of where you, what you want to concentrate on. It's all kinds of things you can do. I always thought about.
Think out of the box.
Private-public partnership regarding our library and library-type services connected with universities and the information age is occurring. I mean, there's a great partnership possibility there. But, you know, again, if you throw out all kinds of ideas, you put them on the table, then we have to pick and choose which ones we want to carry forward right now and which ones we want to specifically put in our master plan next year. So, I don't know how we want to sort, initially, we just need to collect all kinds of ideas. Any idea is good. And then we have to sort them out in some fashion and decide, you know, what categories. And certainly, there's marketing ideas, certainly there's development ideas. Those are two main, main things. And a lot of things we're talking about here are development ideas both for now and the future. And we have to decide which ones we want to pursue, which ones are most applicable to our master plan revision for next year, and then work on developing them and presenting to city council.
The one thing I was really impressed with this art, sustainable development criteria. I don't remember specifically what the zoning was, but if you provide incentives for developers to do things, you will find a lot of thinking out of the box. And, you know, I was a little frustrated with that one subdivision that came in here.
Yeah.
Exactly. That was a point. If we could have provided them some incentive.
Yeah.
To do some bio-sweals or wetland developments or something innovative, there was some, something to encourage them to do that, that would have been a great thing for our community. And I, like the sustainable development, there was an incentive for them to think outside of the box. And if we could do that in other zoning types, that would be really creative, I believe.
But we need engineering to be a part of understanding what we want. Yeah.
Well, that's part. That's one part. But, you know, well, I think what I'd like to do too, you bring that up a lot, Tom, and we talked about developing some sort of seminar in which will bring, bring different people together and talk about this. I want some sort of organized format, again, centering around the master plan so we can have dialogue. But you have to promise me one thing that you won't yell at them when they come in.
Your engineers are sensitive.
They won't, they'll never come back. So, the thing is, I want, what I want is a structured conversation with them.
Well, John and I are accustomed to working with engineers. I mean, you know, they're, right?
Terrible.
I mean, there are various types of engineers. And obviously, a civil engineer thinks that that's the only thing there is, is civil engineering. Electrical engineering is the same way.
Way actually.
And I wouldn't want it any other way.
Right.
I'd want them to feel that way.
Right.
And that's the whole idea. Then you get the best.
Where 50 years ago was good for today.
One of your 30-second spots that you're talking about might alienate some neighboring communities, but it might be worthwhile to show particular buildings and give people an idea of what their municipal property tax rate would be in surrounding communities for that building as opposed to what you're going to pay in taxes in the city of Troy, both commercial and residential.
I think there's a way to do that, you know.
And something I recommended or proposed to our recently departed city manager before he departed the first time was because we seem to have this disconnect between residential residents or residents and business residents is this building pays X number of dollars in municipal property taxes and receives Y number of dollars of city services. This building pays X number of dollars worth of residential or property tax and receives Z amount. Because most people think that the commercial properties in the city are tax consumers when in fact they are tax donors. I happen to live in a condominium. I'm also a tax donor. I pay more taxes than I get services back, but the residences are the ones that receive the benefit of the tax money from the donors. And I think that's another important message that needs to be gotten out to people, is that condominiums and businesses are not your enemy.
Well, that's for sure.
Mr. Grant?
Just, not to belabor this, a great discussion here. I think it's going to evolve into hopefully a workshop. But just to sort of tie in with the two architects here, we had a wonderful Maple Road study. I have a copy of it. Do we have that for public? I think everybody should either have a copy or know of it and we should look at it. The idea was, as they were saying, get students involved. And we've got, like you said, terrific amount of creativity among our youth. That Maple Road, I think is, could be, at least my thought would be, that should be our major focus. We've got other great ideas, other good folks. I love that economic thing. If anything's going to get to people's bottom line, like where's the dollar and cents going, coming and going? I think that's a terrific part of our presentations. But we've got the International Academy of Design and Technology on, just on Maple Road. I mean, just, the driveway's off of Maple Road. At the other, just the ways down Maple Road, we've got, it's the Art Institute of Michigan. Just down the road on Maple Road, we've got the Michigan Design Center. And then, and, you know, and the plans that the, it's Lawrence Technological University, is that how they call it now? They came up with a way to tie in and make it a creative district. And I think we've got the elements there already, little seeds planted for the creative district of Troy. And that could be sort of like the springboard for Creative Troy. In addition to that, I watched, I mentioned a few of you about this PBS production called Designing Healthy Communities. And it was an architectural student who looked at a piece of land in Atlanta and it was a demolished or a remnant of a steel factory. Bottom line was, he convinced developers, he came with a whole beautiful plan, he worked with the school dean of architecture, they came up with this terrific project, they designed it all, inspired developers, and that multimillion-dollar development is already built today because of a student. Now, I think we can kind of learn from that. I'd like to, everybody to, as part of the workshop, to see that segment, at least, on that, of that video, how that student created that new Atlanta. It made, it was nice, it was a walkable town, just what we're talking about. They made a little city inside of Atlanta and it's all walkable. There's, there's no major buildings. It looks like you're walking through a street down in any small-town America or even downtown, even in the neighborhoods of Brooklyn, New York. But it's quiet, it's elegant, people are living and walking distance to all their businesses and their shopping, and it's a little Atlanta, inside of Atlanta. So, I think what we've got going here, we should look at what other people have already done or accomplished and then apply it to our city. I'm just all for this idea.
Yeah, no, it sounds good. Mr. Evans?
I, ever since I've been on the planning commission, I really have been advocating a demonstration project. I know I've talked to Brent before about it. And I know when we did the city, the new ordinance, Kevin, I can't remember his last name.
Klingenberg.
Yes. Had really wonderful ideas about how infill buildings and even over on Maple Road. So, I think all this could be tied in. I really like Mr. Schultz's visual about what taxes, you know, I think if you put that in a 30-second video, that's something that could be a teaching tool.
Wow, I look forward to a script for Mr. Schultz. And some soundbites. And soundbites, yes.
You know, a company is as good as its people. And they want, you know, they want the younger people or they want the people. To me, we have to draw the younger people here. And like you were just talking about, if we were to take a block off of Maple, the light industrial area, and give the students, say, hey, what can be done to make it as, you know, as friendly as possible, as a little city, a little colony in itself, for younger people, not for us. Wow, I'm speaking for myself, but anyhow, you know, although I like to live in a contemporary kind of a thing, but, you know, that's kind of it. Then the developers, as you said, will go right around it. But to me, and then once we get the younger people, I look at Royal Oak. Everybody idolizes Royal Oak with their young people. Well, now it's getting kind of out of hand, I think. But it's gone beyond. But that is what really draws, the walkability. And that's what the people want. They want to walk. I notice in Somerset, there's an awful lot of activity, an awful lot of walking that goes all the way around. There's communities, you know, in my neighborhood, awful lot of walking that goes around. I don't know.
Well, there's been more things to do as well. But anyway, I think some good ideas were put forth and maybe we can summarize these. We'll talk, Brent, and I definitely want to keep on pursuing this, get these ideas organized, and we'll talk about it. We forget the opportunity, pretty much every study session will be on the agenda in some fashion and we'll move forward. I would definitely want to solidify these ideas, definitely want to work on a seminar, definitely want to work on some things we can present to city council later on this year. So, I think we can come up with some good things and bring the vision back to our city. That's really the main thing. If there's nothing else, I'll move on to the next item, which is planning, public comment. Since no one was here, we'll move on to planning commission comment. Mr. Moxley?
Actually, I've got a couple of things. Mr. Hudson just reminded me that the property at Square Lake and De Twinder that we discussed with Tim Hortons tonight, I was actually the attorney that handled the condemnation when the city acquired the property. And Mr. Hudson's partner, Tom Sawyer, represented the property owner. The only reason I bring that up is because once he said that, I remember what the arguments were. Mr. Sawyer argued that the city should pay more money for the property because if the city didn't acquire it, somebody could develop that property with a drugstore with a drive-thru. That was his argument. And our argument in the city was that, that a drive-through would never be approved. So, it's just interesting. And actually, the jury, I think, came somewhere between the middle of articles. The second comment, as you may know, our office, we handle, there's four nightly meetings that we always hand, that we always have a representative, the city council meeting, which the city attorney usually attends. But then there's the, this is the planning commission, the zoning board, and the liquor advisory committee. Our, one of the assistants handled that and we usually, every now and then, reassign everybody. And we're doing that right now. So, this is my last meeting where I will be representing you guys. Sue Lancaster will come in and then I'll go to the zoning board of appeals meetings. And our newest attorney, Julie DeFrain, will handle the liquor advisory committee meetings. Onto the next reassignment. So, anyways, good work with all you guys.
We'll probably see you again down the line. But thank you. You've done an excellent job as always.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it.
Mr. Hudson?
Well done, Alan. I'll miss you. Good advice.
Oh, thanks.
See you, ZB.
Mr. Taylor? She says ZB. Mr. Schultz?
I'd like to thank Mr. Moxley for an outstanding job.
Oh, absolutely.
Both this time and the prior times.
I'll probably be back in a few years.
Because I've seen you come and go and come and go. And I would just like to take a personal opportunity, though he's already gone, to thank city manager John Zerlike for an outstanding job. We're talking about things that make our city great, and in my opinion, John Zerlike was one of the things that made this city great.
Mr. Evans?
I also thank you, Mr. Moxley. I've got several questions for you over my tenure here and I, you've always been very forthcoming. We're going to miss the grand sack, the lawsuit updates, but.
Sue.
Good luck to you. Thank you.
Mr. Grant? Mr. Grant, is there seven? Nothing. Great, well, thank you very much, gentlemen, and see you in two weeks. Thanks, John.